I call this meeting to order, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silent reflection for our servicemen and women throughout the world, and also for those who have passed away in our community. An executive session was held tonight with the mayor to discuss issues relating to personnel matters. Roll call, please.
Mr. King?
Here.
Mr. Schuster?
President.
Dr. Rothschild?
Here.
Mr. McAndrew?
President.
Mr. Dennehy?
Here. Please dispense with the reading of the minutes.
Third Order 3A, Controller's Report for the month ending January 31, 2022. 3B, Lackawanna County Planning Commission Subdivision and Land Development Evaluation Reports, Review January 19, 2022, and January 26, 2022. 3C, Riley Associates Financial Disclosure Documents Received from OECD Director, February 9, 2022. 3D, Minutes of the Non-Uniform Municipal Pension Board Meeting Held, January 19, 2022. 3E, Agenda for the Non-Uniform Municipal Pension Board Meeting Held, February 16, 2022. 3F, Minutes of the Scranton Police Pension Committee Commission Meeting Held, December 15, 2022. 3G, Minutes of the Scranton Police Pension Commission Meeting Held, January 19, 2022. 3H, Minutes of the Composite Pension Board Meeting Held, January 19, 2022. 3I, Minutes of the Scranton Firefighters Pension Commission Meeting Held, December 15, 2021. 3J, Minutes of the Scranton Firefighters Pension Commission Meeting Held, January 19, 2022. 3K, Correspondence Received from Mayor Cognetti, dated February 16, 2022, regarding appointing Mitesh Patel to the position of acting treasurer for a period of 35 days.
Do any council members have comments on any of the third order items? If not, received and filed. Do any council members have any announcements at this time?
I have one announcement, in case people had missed it, it was announced last week that we will be participating in a small business micro grant program. So this will be able to provide grants in the amounts of between $2,500 to $5,000 to businesses, specifically ones that are in like the new or early stage of their business, which I think is exciting because I believe there have been a lot of funding opportunities for businesses that suffered through the COVID pandemic, but then we have had new businesses that have opened as well or plan to, and this will be something to support those efforts. The businesses have to be in a low to moderate service area. It is a CDBG program, and we are partnering with the University of Scranton on it. So you can apply if you meet the qualifications through the City of Scranton's website, and then if you have additional questions on this, you can contact Tiffany Cross Luciani in oecd@scranpa.gov. Thank you.
Thank you. Do any other council members have any announcements?
Just a few real quickly. Want to remind everyone that the Scranton St. Patrick Day Parade is scheduled for Saturday, March 12. The day begins with the Mass at 10:00 at St. Peter's Cathedral, followed by the Brian Kelly Memorial Two Mile Race, which begins at 11:00 a.m. in front of the Scranton Cultural Center, and then the parade kicks off at 11:30. Is it 11:30, 11:45?
11:45.
11:45 that day. So we're hoping for great weather and looking forward to the St. Patrick's Day Parade. I also want to announce that hopefully, it looks like we're going to be running the 25th Steamtown Marathon on Sunday, October 9. Registration is going to begin April 1. So we've been trying to do the 25th Annual for three years now, so hopefully this is going to be our big year to get our 25th Annual Marathon in, and I just wanted to announce that. Also, the Shamrock Heart Foundation, we're a local 501(c)(3) that sends out, we send out flowers and carnations on St. Patrick's Day, March 17, and we bring them to all the nursing homes and to the hospitals. So we're working to gather donations to help offset some of the costs of that venture and looking for some volunteers and drivers to help put together the corsages and deliver them to the nursing homes and hospitals on March 17. So those are some of the things happening coming up in the next few months. Thank you.
Thank you. Do any other council members have any announcements? Just one thing, I think Mr. King forgot to mention regarding the St. Patrick's Day Parade. If you want to put an entry into the parade, you have until Monday, February 28, to submit an entry on it's, and the website is stpatparade.com. So if you want to put in an entry and participate in this year's parade, please do so. Also, just a reminder that although, even though there was a holiday yesterday, garbage is on schedule this week. The DPW contract doesn't call for President's Day as one of their observed holidays, so just a reminder that garbage pickup is on schedule this week. And then also to just remind, a update I got from the tax office last week regarding real estate bills they should have, you should have received last week. The tax collector just wants to remind taxpayers that in-person payment methods, that taxpayers paying with checks at the Lackawanna County Government Center are required to utilize the Dropbox and the vestibule of the building. All payments made via the Dropbox will receive a receipt in the mail. It will be accessible Monday through Friday, 8:30 a.m. through 4:30 p.m. Taxpayers, excuse me, taxpayers paying with cash will be permitted to enter the single tax office to make their payments. Social distancing will be enforced and masks are required. Taxpayers who mail their tax payments should include a stamped, self-addressed envelope to receive a receipt. Online payment methods are listed on the STO website at scrantontaxoffice.org for refuse fee payment and exoneration procedure. The STO is collecting the refuse fee for the City of Scranton, and it's included in the tax bill. The city and school district real estate taxes cannot be paid without the refuse fee. City SSD and refuse fee can be paid quarterly using the coupons at the bottom of the bill. Quarterly payments do not include county taxes. No other partial payments will be accepted. Taxpayers who believe they are eligible for an exoneration of any part of their refuse fee should contact the City of Scranton's Treasury Bureau. Applications are on the city's website or at the treasurer's office. An off refund request will be processed in December of 2022 or January of 2023, once sufficient proof that a vacancy has existed for the full calendar year. Advance exonerations will not be granted. And that's all I have. Mr. Waldenberg?
Fourth Order, citizens' participation.
First on the sign-in sheet is Joan Hodawanitz.
Joan Hodawanitz, a city resident. Let me just start with announcing the Friends of the Scranton Public Library will be having a book sale at the marketplace at Steamtown, March 1 through the 6, right in front of Crunch Gym. The hours are pretty much the same as the mall's hours. It's a great place to get books for $1 or $2, especially hardcover books, so you can't beat the price. So I hear there's a rumor we have a draft audit.
That's what I was made aware of this afternoon.
Hallelujah. So can I also assume that maybe we'll see it either in the Third Order or on the city's website sometime next week?
As soon as we, as long as we receive it by Monday morning, we will have it on our agenda in Third Order for next week.
Okay, thank you, appreciate it. It's only five months late from when Kohansky said they were going to give it to us. I remember the date they announced originally was September 30. I also noticed that according to the Controller's Report for January, they picked up another check for $15,000. The labor union contracts, is there any information on their progress?
They're still being negotiated.
Okay, 14.5% of the year is already gone. I hope there won't be a negative impact on the budget. Item 3K on the agenda tonight, Mr. Mitesh Patel is going to be acting treasurer through March 22. I didn't see a resume on him. Does he have a background in finance?
I will, we will request a resume and we'll get back to you on that one.
Okay, at least it didn't get into the agenda. Items 5C and 5D, the city's requesting grants for 10 electric vehicles and charging stations. I would assume that this is the beginning of transitioning from gas-powered vehicles to electric vehicles long-term. But it's interesting, since as I pointed out last week, and I will point out next week during the public caucus, your proposed zoning ordinance says nothing about electric vehicle charging stations. It says a lot about gas stations because of the hazards with fuel, but you've got to remember those electric vehicles and their batteries. Batteries cause a lot of fires, and they've got to be stored somewhere when they're used up, and they've got to be disposed of. So I hope that someone takes a look at that before you finalize a zoning ordinance, which may not be updated for another 30 years. Item 5F, the grant to help us navigate out of Act 47, and I think it's probably Pell and Jerry Cross, and he's a great asset to the city, so he would help us a great deal. But it just surprised me that we, I thought we successfully exited Act 47, and this is to help us successfully navigate our way out of Act 47. So I think I understand what you're trying to do, but it looked a little awkward the way it got advertised, so, you know, I support it, but...
I think there was some miscommunication too between the city and DCED regarding this grant. I was under the assumption that this was going to be put in and be finalized before we exited, but there was a little miscommunication, which is why we're getting it in afterwards.
Okay. Is this going to just be a one-year thing, or might be extended beyond that?
That's my understanding, that it's going to be a one-year thing. I think the grant only provides for one year.
Okay. And item 5G, I was trying to find out who owns 524 Penn Avenue. So I went on the county's assessment website or database, and nothing popped up. And I wanted to go onto the city's database for delinquent real estate and refuse fees. I couldn't find the database. Is it still on the city's website, or I just couldn't find it?
I have to, I'll have to check that. I don't know what happened there.
Okay. The point being, I have no problem with going for a grant to clean up contamination in a certain site. We did it for the pocket park, but I would hate to see a precedent that property owners could just walk away from contamination because the city is going to handle it. We need to hold property owners accountable. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the list is Les Spindler.
Evening, Council. Les Spindler, city resident, homeowner, taxpayer. First off, welcome, Mr. King. I have been here since you were on council, and I was here a few weeks ago, you were off that night. Good to see you again. Good luck. As Councilman Donahue said, last week I received my tax bill, and it got me thinking. I think this is the second year where the garbage tax is related to property taxes, and it got me thinking, how do I know I'm getting the discount on a garbage tax? I don't remember what my property tax used to be, so how do I know I'm getting my discount?
It's factored into the equation there, so if you...
Yeah, but how do I know that? I don't know what I'm supposed to be paying. There should be a separate line on there for the garbage fee.
It, so it is itemized on there.
For the garbage tax.
It is itemized on there, where...
I didn't see it.
So when you go down, when you go down the list, it says what county tax, where your county taxes are, and then there's also like the library fee from the, on the county side, and I believe there's another fee, and then it goes down to the city, and then it has the city, school district, refuse fee.
I'll have to check it again, I don't remember seeing that. Anyway, another thought I had, I've been coming to these meetings for 20 years, and for the first 18 years before they put it in with the property taxes, I argued, do we pay our property taxes after our garbage is picked up? And the answer I got, oh, it's not a tax, it's a fee. Now all of a sudden, it's a tax. Who makes these decisions?
It's still a fee, it's just on the garbage, or on the revenue.
Well, then that's illegal, because I came to this council a few years ago, and I was told by somebody that works in the CPA's office, you can't put a, the IRS said, you can't put a fee in our property taxes.
The library fee's been on the tax bill for 15, at least 15, 20 years.
Oh, no, maybe nobody cares about that. Library fee isn't anything like the garbage fee. But now I hear it's a tax. What is it, a fee or a tax? I think it's another way that the city is screwing over the taxpayers. Been doing it for 20 years since I've been coming to these meetings, and I don't know if that court case that's pending will have anything to do with it, but I hope it does. The property tax, the taxpayers deserve a break one of these times. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Next on the list is Ron Elman.
Good evening, Council. You know, if there's anyone out there that's better off today than they were a year ago, I wish they'd tell me the secret. This isn't the America I grew up in. That one's abolished. I don't know, 20 years from now, I just don't, can't imagine what this country would be Anyway, like a few of the people I talked to, I read Kelly's obnoxious statements every Sunday, Wednesday, to see what's on his hate list for the week. Last Sunday, it was the landfill and the plant. I don't know if you, any of you investigated that plant, but simply it takes the waste products and turns it into heating, gas, and electricity that's going to be sold probably to New Jersey. There's a possibility, if you ask me, of our mayor trying to broker a situation for this county, the city and the county, of buying that at a reduced rate, because all the contracts, there's still room to squeeze in there. You're talking about a huge saving, and I know she's capable of doing that. I don't know if she wants to, but it would certainly, it's certainly be a plus for everybody And one other thing, Saturday, when I was watching Flash Gordon, he crashed, landed his spaceship on the planet Bongo. I'm going to tell you, I'm coming to something, though, don't look at me like a nutcase. And the Emperor Ming, he's got these zombies that look just like the ones that, the living dead. Of course, that's 80 years ago. The zombies captured Flash, and they bring him before a council, just like you guys, but they were better dressed. They had robes with hoods on them, so you couldn't really see their faces too much. The council's name was the Council of the Wise, just like here. But I have to wait till next week to see how he escapes. You know, when I look at that clock, it reminds me of a NASCAR speedometer going around and around. If you want, I'll tell you what happens next week. Really, give some thought to this, this plant and investigating if we could further it. You know, I see these people every couple of days. I get up at 5:00 in the morning and go have coffee with them. They can be talked to. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Elman. That exhausts our sign-in sheet for tonight. Would anyone else like to address, Council?
Marie Schumacher. I have a hard time saying Keystone landfill when it's really a mountain of garbage, but they did advertise on the 2nd of February that they are going to be submitting a major permit modification to DEP to modify the leachate management. Now, what I'd like to know is, will the city be commenting on this since much leachate flows through our neighborhoods?
I'm hopeful, yeah. Once, I mean, we have to see what the permit modification is, but yes.
Well, I mean, somebody is looking at it, and do we get, do we get paid for the lines that, the leachate lines that go through the city?
I don't believe we do.
Okay. Then, moving on to a property tax conundrum, does a property owner benefit from having a tenant? For instance, does General Dynamics pay property tax or not based on the fact that the owner is government-owned? And contrary to the other way, does the Steamtown receive a tax reduction because they rent to nonprofits such as Geisinger, La Serna College, and I guess at one time Delta Medics, but I heard they moved out? Anybody know the answer?
I don't, but I'll look into that and hopefully have one for you next week.
Thank you. Now, census impact, as we're well aware, our population has declined, and the governor has given us the opportunity to become a third-class city. And I would like to know when you all are going to put a committee together to at least study the differences, positives and negatives, and bring it forth to the people. You have any intention of doing that?
I think the whole class system, first class, second class, is just outdated anyway. I think that needs to be completely rewritten.
Well, but that's what we have to work with now, that's what we have.
Yes.
So I think we should, I think you all should appoint a group to tell what the positives and negatives are of going from a 2A to a third. Then, stormwater. Many moons ago, we were told that Sapa reps were coming here, but I have not seen them, and I think I've been here every meeting, and I'd just like to know how long you are going to plan to kick the stormwater can down. I mean, Mr. Dennehy, when you first came onboard, you were pretty deeply involved in some of that, and particularly, I know, over in Kaiser Valley you were. Because I remember the other day, I, I don't know where it came from, but my, on my computer came a former, yeah, well, I guess it was just a city council meeting, but you, Lenny Vrebro was here, where I'm standing, and he asked about that pipe, and you told him that you believed the pipe was replaced that had been cut off. Now, has that been, has that portion between what, Merrifield and Dewey, is that no longer a problem flood-wise?
So I don't believe it's as big of a problem, but it's still, it's not as big of a problem, but it still is a problem. We just had, I think it was about six months ago, we had an engineering study done on the impacts there, and that now is going to impact how we use some of this ARP money to actually do a complete fix of the issues over in Kaiser Valley.
Has that, did you ever follow up on that? Did that pipe get put through?
I was never given a solid answer one way or the other on that pipe, but we do have an engineering report now on the issues facing the Kaiser Valley.
And what...
As a whole, not just that one.
Yeah, and what's going to happen now? You've got that, and what's the next step?
So now the next step is to actually do something to fix the problem, now that we have the engineering report on how the water flows off the mountain.
Okay, and do you...
No, you can finish your thought.
The rescue plan, are, is, when is the meeting going to be, a public meeting for we people?
So myself and Dr. Rothschild had our first sit-down with the mayor today, and now the mayor's going to move through and have a sit-down with the rest of council, and then we're going to have a public meeting about what the, you know, the overall plan looks like.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Would anyone else like to address, Council?
Tom Coymanuka. Was an interesting pre-meeting session, and one of the interesting things I scribbled down is business, future business in Scranton. As we know, business trends have been going towards the internet, internet sales, which can be run from home offices, with supply lines being mailed from China or anywhere else in the world. Why would anyone incorporate, build, work, and create a business LLC in Scranton? There's a problem with taxation in Scranton, as we all know. That's why a lot of the companies have gone up to Jessup to build warehouses and everywhere else. It's because of the tax burden in this area.
I would disagree with that. I think they build them up there because they're, it's easier on and off out of the highway than it is here.
Okay.
And land.
I just, I just look at it, and I see that if I can incorporate in Delaware or somewhere else and run my business officially out of there, there is no reason to come to a place where I have tax, a bigger tax burden. That's why the Garment Workers Union left Scranton, and why a number of businesses left over a period of time. That's not just this area. It is a number of, a number of places throughout this nation have been reaching the struggle of lost revenue purely for the reason it is no longer bound to city borders. I understand we left Act 47. I believe the triple LST tax is part of Act 47. Is there anything about readjusting the fees considering, I believe the maximum is either 104 or 107 once you're outside of Act 47?
It should be 52, the maximum's $52 a week. We're allowed to continue the tripling as long as our pension systems remain distressed. That was a law passed, I think, in 2014.
Thank you. Now, members of council, first, on a side note, I brought up pilot or payments in lieu of taxes, and how in comparison, some nonprofits versus single private donors were greatly under-donating. Since we are talking about nonprofits, I address the U of S. I want to touch on Scranton tomorrow. It has been disclosed before that Scranton... It has been disclosed before that Scranton Tomorrow is financed by a pilot pass-through donated from the University of Scranton. What I had to look for themselves, Scranton Tomorrow was made to support an increased growth in center-city Scranton. Its goal is not the entire city, but the backyard of the university. Back in years ago, it was underfunded and fell into almost hitting a zero balance. This was corrected by two increases in donations. The city, I believe, changed from 37,000 to 75, and then the U of S dipped in with $200,000. Over the few years, the coffers have swelled, and they have close to $1 million in their revenue. I would like to see Scranton Tomorrow come forward as it is a nonprofit and do a pilot program for the neighborhoods around city of Scranton. I'm talking about 10% donated specifically to surrounding areas per year to serve to build up not only center-city, but the lifelines coming into this city. They are a nonprofit, and as long as they have excess funds every single year growing in their bankroll, I think it would be beneficial to ask them to put in some of that money towards building the community. I also have a problem with, that someone needs to deal with Mr. Murray and his ECTV from the IT department, or whoever the contracted skill trainer is. So far in his bid openings, we've had, when he shared screens on ECTV, blank screens while he's talking. We've had him open a screen to go up and show it, and all of a sudden, instead of seeing the screen when he's on dual screens, he has the wrong screen open, and we're seeing pop-up reminders on his computer. And last, with the, on 117, there was a bid for smoke detectors for City Hall. Two of them were taken by email from him. The third was, the third was put through City Hall. It was done through a telephone call that was basically muted. The problem is, evidently, no one in City Hall knew how to scan that document put in for a bid and get it to him on email so he could effectively open up that bid and in clarity, show it. He had to contact by phone for that bid, and I think someone needs to look at that department's communication because we're not getting the information that we should be from.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to address council?
It's me again, Dave Dobson, resident. Okay. Once again, I'm going to display my little poster. I remade one, and it would end most gerrymandering. The old district is here. You could move out this way, you can move out south. That would be west. But no more districts looking like a bowl of Lucky Charms cereal, breakfast cereal. And I'm calling it the Straight Line Redistrict Plan. I'm going to leave this one here. This new district restores the necessary population, and this is only a prototype. It has nothing to do with the actual size of our district. It's just so that someone could see it on television. I think that Scranton is being carved up like a birthday cake, and I'm not happy with it at all. Some of our proposed districts will not reflect the attitudes and opinions of Scranton, or maybe not even be concerned about them. Originally, it started with four, so, I mean, come on. And on Spruce Street last week, I don't talk the way some people do, but actually, I find Spruce Street not to be too objectionable of a street. There's a nasty pothole in front of a sanction law firm, and I do use Spruce Street right from the expressway. I turn off from South Side, which is where I live. But I don't know if that many projects are that large of a project going on, and, you know, it may even alienate the people on that street further by having 15 months of construction going on. And it's really questionable, so I think there's other parts of the city that could use some funding. And on electric cars, I hear that again tonight. And I'm wondering, you know, I've been through about five so-called gas shortages, or whatever you want to call it, in my lifetime, and it was very disruptive because I was employed virtually all my lifetime in the automotive industry and repair industry. So, what I'm wondering, if we're not funneling ourselves into a thing where then we could cartel homes and, no electricity for the homes, your furnace won't work, your oil burner or gas burner won't have an air supply, or, you know, it just goes on and on. You won't have power for your television because all of these people plugging in their Humvees every evening at their home will be hogging up the energy, the electrical energy. I think hybrids are the better solution, way better, because you could use a hybrid even if the electricity goes out. And I'd like to salute the anti-vaxx people. Please find somewhere else to go. And Joan mentioned about pollution on certain lots. Now, we're cleaning this up. You know, all my life, until I was 16, I lived in a little mining town that was surrounded by 50- and 100-foot holes, if not 1,000-foot hole. And the point in being that that is what industry and business calls externalization. They externalized their liabilities, they didn't cover in the holes, they didn't want to pay 10 cents for it, and who gets stuck with it to remediate it? The people that, in my area, people used to go out on those ATVs, and they'd go over a cliff and ride into a strip mine full of water and drown in the middle of the winter. You know, so that's what it's called, externalization. And I really think that the Naples, I looked at their plan.
Thank you, Mr. Dobson.
I'll make it quick, but that, they want to dump their leachate in the Neogorge. Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Have a good night.
I don't think so.
Would anyone else like to address council? Mr. Waldenberg?
Fifth order, 5A motions.
Mr. King, do you have any motions or comments?
No, at this time.
Mr. Schuster, do you have any motions or comments?
Nothing at this time.
Dr. Rothschild, do you have any motions or comments?
Both quick ones, just in response to Joan. I am looking into whether or not the electric charging station should be included in the Sapa plan, so I haven't received a response yet, but I will mention when I do. And just something with regards to ARPA funding for American Rescue Plan. There will be available on the city website. I don't have a date yet, but they are working on it and should be up shortly. There'll be a survey that residents can take for how they would like to see the ARPA money spent within the city. And of course, there is a draft plan, and we have an idea of some areas that, that the mayor and her administration feel that money should go towards, but it is also important that we receive public input. Maybe there's, there's a big piece that we're missing, or something that is more important to people that we should know about, and so I think that will be really useful when that is published. And another exciting part of it is that you'll be given a budget of $100, and then you can put, you know, how much of that $100 you would place into certain things for the city and for the use of that money. So, that will be our way of seeing, like, what percentage the public would like to see go towards, you know, whether it's stormwater or the parks, and so that will be a useful component of it. And the last thing that I wanted to mention, I did have a resident contact me. He's having difficulty getting his refunded money for the refuse fees from, from last year. He had a property that he shouldn't have had to pay refuse fees on, and we're still waiting to see if those checks have been sent out. I don't know if other residents are experiencing that issue, if they haven't received their checks yet for that, but the gentleman has not, so I would ask that Mr. Waldenberg, if you can once again reach out to the mayor's office to find out where those checks are, if they've been, been sent, because that's very important if people are expecting to receive that in December, and now we're close to March here, and they still haven't received that money that's owed to them.
I will, Dr. Rothschild.
That's all, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McAndrew. Do you have any motions or comments?
I have two complaints, both of them were this Sunday, or this past Sunday. One is on East Mountain, one's on West Mountain. So, we'll start with the West Mountain. So, this is West Mountain Road from Parallel Drive to Newton Road. Earlier this morning, inches of ice. The city, the city says it's a PNDOT issue, but these are city roads. If there is an emergency, emergency vehicles won't be able to get up these streets. This is a huge issue. Please, please share this and help get the word out. All right, so, Mr. Waldenberg, I have a picture. I'll just give you what I have, all right, so you can send this over to clarify who's responsible for the road, so we know for sure, okay? And then on West Mountain, the same issue. This was Sunday morning, or Saturday, maybe, ice everywhere. This is at the 1500 block of Froud Avenue that was impassable. The citizen, I'm sorry, what?
East Mountain.
East Mountain, what did I say? The first one was West, this is East Mountain. I apologize. All right. So, this is East Mountain, Froud Avenue, 1500 block of Froud Avenue. I guess, you know, this resident called the DPW three times. Guy said he'd pass it along, so called later, still nothing. And then, finally, they got a call back, and they said that they aren't sending anyone out until it snows. So, if you can also please put this section of, up on East Mountain, this street, on their radar, there's a storm coming Friday. I'll give you both, I'll give you the pictures for both and the correspondence I received. And then, secondly, so, past couple of months, we received a summary from OECD about quality of life issues, and we put it in third order. And, you know, it's been very helpful, I think, for us. We have something to look at. I think it's helpful for the residents, they get to see it, and eventually, it's going to be an open gov. But as of right now, that's only going to be open gov, an open gov. So, I think that we, as councils, should provide a report like that or a summary to the taxpayers. So, when you, like an example, Mrs. Hoda Wannas, when you keep asking about, say, you know, where are the union contracts? Or you ask about the audit? Or, Mrs. Schumacher, you come and ask about a bunch of stuff that, that we do send down, but we don't get the quick response we think we should. And it's not that we're leaving you hanging, but I would love to have a similar report, because this, these issues that we talk about and you do bring to us during citizens' participation is important. And, and, but them concerns and complaints are probably not going to funnel through open gov, like the quality of life issues, that is going to be very visible eventually to everybody. But I feel it's our responsibility to probably provide the same summary or update, not weekly, but we could put it in third order like the one we get from OECD. So, with that said, I'd like to make a motion to start that process.
Second, second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved?
That is all I have, thanks.
Thank you.
Excuse me. I was actually up on East Mountain Friday night, and I think it's all over the mountain where there's that issue when you have, you know, warming temperatures that immediately freeze over, there's certain areas that turn into ice. And I think that's, you know, that's a product of us not addressing stormwater, but hope, you know, that is something that will be addressed, because it is a stormwater issue too that's causing those issues on both, you know, East and West Mountain, and also in certain parts of, you know, the city overall. Another, just the other thing I have is, I was extremely disappointed that the commissioners tabled their legislation regarding reassessment last week, and I was even more disappointed that Commissioner Dominic reverted to the same scare tactics that have been used in the past. Reassessment is not done to, you know, to raise anybody's taxes. It's not done to impact, you know, those that really shouldn't be impacted. It's done to help those people. Because the only people that are benefiting from the lack of a reassessment right now are the, are the people that are able to take advantage of the system as it currently is. We are not taxing on current value, we're taxing based off a formula that's used to calculate current value based off what the assessment was 50 years ago. We need to, we need to tax, you know, we need to set tax rates based on what current value is, not what it is 50 years ago. So, I really am hopeful that the commissioner will reevaluate her stance and that we could get this process started. There are protections for people who are disproportionately affected by, you know, property taxes. There's a Pennsylvania property tax rent rebate, there's an assessment process. You know, if, if the commissioner is so concerned about actually, you know, coming up with policies that affect these people, then why hasn't she proposed one? But I really hope that she reconsider's and that we could get this process starting so that we could modernize the way we do business. Because it's not only about doing reassessment once, but it's about creating a process where reassessment could be done within every, in every 10-year period, whether that's spot reassessment, whether that's some, some form of that. But, but I just really hope that she reconsider's her stance on that, and that's all I have for tonight.
Mr. Waldenberg?
5B, for introduction, a resolution ratifying and approving the execution and submission of the grant application by the city of Scranton on behalf of the United Neighborhood Centers of Northeastern Pennsylvania to the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. Acting through the Commonwealth Financing Authority for a local share account grant pursuant to the PA Racehorse Development and Gaming Act in the amount of $997,500 for the project to be known as UNC 530 Cedar Avenue Anchor Building Project located at 530 Cedar Avenue, Scranton, Pennsylvania. And authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials of the city of Scranton to accept the grant if successful, and educate and enter into a local share account grant contract and commitment letter with the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania to accept and utilize the grant in the amount of $997,500 if awarded by the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania for such project.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that Item 5B be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second?
On the question, on the question, one thing I did forget to mention in fifth order, but I will bring up here because it is relatable here. Mr. Coyne brought up about Scranton Tomorrow going into neighborhoods. Scranton Tomorrow is an economic development organization, that's their main purpose. UNC, a neighbor works, they're the neighborhood development organizations that we go through, so I just wanted to clarify that. Anyone else on the question? All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
5C, for introduction, a resolution ratifying and approving the execution and submission of the grant application by the city of Scranton to Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development for $35,641.50 to help fund infrastructure and charging stations for up to 10 electric vehicles, funding for which is simultaneously being sought by the city. the city of Scranton and authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to accept the grant, coordinate, and disperse the grant funds as appropriate.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that Item 5C be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question?
On the question, um, I, I'm okay moving this forward, introducing it. I think when it's time, when it comes time to actually do this project, I think we do have to take a closer look at, uh, the cost benefit of this. Um, right here, this one is $35,000, and looking at the average cost of these stations, they're at least $60,000. So the city is going to have to put up a match, and electric cars are only as clean as their power source, so I think we do need to look at, you know, is this maintainable? What's the lifespan of the cars, uh, what, the lifespan of the cars? Where are they gonna be stored? Things like that.
Anyone else on the question?
Uh, on the question, I, um, I'm happy to see this legislation being introduced tonight. Um, I, I hope that we do, uh, receive this, this grant. I think, uh, it'll be helpful in moving the city forward towards becoming more environmentally conscious, conscious, and, uh, I also, um, sorry, uh, I also feel that, uh, this will be a good way for specifically the Lips Department to travel around the city and so that residents see them being more visible within their communities. Uh, I think that we've been missing that, that factor, and it, an inspector might be around your neighborhood and, and checking out a property, but you're not aware of it. You might not recognize the person, you're not in a uniform, so you'll see these vehicles, uh, coming around throughout the, the city, uh, and knowing that something is, is being done within your neighborhood. Uh, so that's, uh, why I'll be voting in favor of introduction tonight.
Thank you. Anyone else on the question? All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
5D for introduction, a resolution ratifying and approving the execution and submission of the grant application by the city of Scranton to Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development for $75,000 to help fund up to 10 electric vehicles for code enforcement officers in the city of Scranton and authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to accept the grant, coordinate, and disperse the grant funds as appropriate.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that Item 5D be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question?
On the question, very similar to 5C, um, the grant application is for $75,000. The average cost of these cars is about $56,000, so this would be about, uh, I guess, about one-tenth of the cost of the total project. Um, you know, I have questions as to who's going to maintain these vehicles, where they're gonna be stored, disposal, et cetera. So, uh, I think it also might be beneficial if we're looking into this, alternative sources, maybe talk to the landfill about, uh, natural gas vehicles, which are, um, about half the cost.
Anyone else on the question? All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
5E for introduction, a resolution ratifying and approving the execution and submission of the grant application by the city of Scranton to the Firehouse Subs Public Safety Foundation for up to $49,975 to help fund automated external defibrillators, AEDs, and authorize the mayor and other appropriate city officials to accept the grant, coordinate, and disperse the grant funds as appropriate.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that Item 5E be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question? All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
5F for introduction, a resolution ratifying and approving the execution and submission of the grant application to the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development for the Strategic Management Planning Program by the city of Scranton for funds to be used to successfully navigate its exit from Act 47, and authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to accept the grant, coordinate, and disperse the grant funds as appropriate.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that Item 5F be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question? All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
5G for introduction, a resolution ratifying and approving the execution and submission of the grant application by the city of Scranton to Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development for $100,000 to be utilized for ground remediation at 524 Penn Avenue, formerly Al's Mobile Mart, Scranton, Pennsylvania, and authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to accept the grant, coordinate, and disperse the grant funds as appropriate.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that Item 5G be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question? All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
5H for introduction, a resolution, accepting a donation from the Wright Center to the Scranton Police Department in the form of 270 Quick View At Home Over-the-Counter COVID-19 Test Kits.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that Item 5H be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question? All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Nate? The ayes have it, and so moved.
Sixth order, 6A, reading by title, file the council number nine, 2022, establishing regulations and restrictions for the location and use of lots, land, buildings, and other structures, the height, number of stories, and size and bulk of buildings and structures, the density of population, off-street parking, and similar accessory regulations in the city of Scranton, Pennsylvania, Lackawanna County, and for said purposes dividing the city of Scranton into districts and establishing the boundaries thereof, prescribing certain uniform regulations for each such district, and providing for administrative enforcement and amendment of its provisions in accordance with the Pennsylvania Municipalities Planning Code 53 PS Section 10101, SSEC, as amended.
You've heard reading by title of Item 6A. What is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I move that Item 6A pass reading by title.
Second.
On the question? All those, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
I make a motion to, uh, table Item 6A.
Second.
There's a motion on the floor and a second to table Item 6A. This piece of legislation is being tabled to allow for a public hearing to be held on the proposed changes to the zoning ordinance next Tuesday, March 1st, 2022, at 5:00 p.m. On the question? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
Seventh order, 7A, no business at this time. Eighth order, 8A, no business at this time.
If there's no further business, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
This meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
Visit ectv.network for the ECTV program-scheduled city and county meeting rebroadcasts and more. ECTV, Electric City Television, live municipal broadcasts on Comcast, Channel 19.